I will call the January fifteenth city council meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins.
Here.
Matt McKinney.
Here.
Brian Miller.
Here.
Jim Talbot.
Here.
Logan Welch.
Here.
Call for motion approved, the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Plea of allegiance?
Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Item A petitions, communications and requests. This is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have any? Anybody in there? Nope? Anyone have any? Just reminder that we have a town hall meeting next Monday on the twenty-second at 7:00 PM at the middle school. And I guess the following Monday is the chamber dinner for those that are going on the twenty-ninth, Monday evening as well. Other than that, I guess we'll move on. To B minutes and claims. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, we consider it's normal sequence on the agenda. We have minutes of January second and January fourth of 2018. Resolution on payroll for the period ending January sixth, 2018, and paid on January twelfth, 2018, and resolution on bills and the funds list. How would you like to?
Would you approve one through three collectively?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item C is a general agenda. Resolution amending the 2013 comprehensive plan for City of Webster City, Iowa to reflect the change regarding the future land use.
Either way, I can touch on it. So this is, this one, a next agenda item relate to Quickstar's request for rezoning. Before the rezoning can be considered for Quickstar, the comprehensive plan would have to be amended to update the future land use. So this blurred image, and I can zoom out a little bit, is roughly the intersection of Fair Meadow and Superior. The orange portion indicates what would be commercial for future land use. The amended, or the, what's before the council would be to amend the map, amend the comprehensive plan to extend the commercial future land use to encompass the parcel that is currently owned by Webster City Federal, and that Quickstar is considering developing for their, for their plan. To give you an idea of zoning wise, the parcel's already zoned partially commercial on the southwest corner of the lot, encompassing roughly about a third of the parcel size. The remaining portions being zoned residential. So before the zoning ordinance can be amended, if council still chooses, the comprehensive plan would have to be updated to reflect the future land use.
A call for motion. To adjust to, where are we at? Call for motion for amending the comprehensive plan?
Told me.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Item two is 5:30 PM is the time of a public hearing on the proposed rezoning of property from R1, single-family dwelling, and R2, multiple-family dwelling district to C3 highway commercial. District said property being located in an area west of Superior Street and north of Fair Meadow Drive. I will open the hearing.
I just want to remind council that there was a petition previously brought to council on October second stating, "We, the undersigned, are in favor of the new Quickstar to be located on Fair Meadow Drive." This petition had approximately ninety-one signatures.
Okay. Are there any written objections?
I have several written objections that I will share with you now. On December eleventh, there was a petition filed with approximately ninety-nine signatures. At the heading, it says, "The R1 and R2 zoning in the area between Webster City Federal Bank and Mahary Family Dentistry should not be changed to C3 zoning. The residents of the community over a long period of time have built homes in the area adjacent to the property before mentioned. With the assurance that this was and is a residential area, this assurance should not be taken lightly. The company that proposes to use this area for a convenience store slash filling station for autos and trucks has now agreed to, or at least in the process of agreeing, to fix the intersection at the corner of Fair Meadow Drive and Superior Street, no doubt for their benefit. The City of Webster City, obviously, has taken a position that it would be a smart move to get the intersection fixed at little to no cost. Do not forget the old dock stop and the Yes Way Filling Station is at the corner of Ohio and Superior Street, is being replaced with a new filling station and convenience store in a C3 zone. That is approximately two and a half blocks from the area that seeks rezoning for the same services. Please use the R1 and R2 zones at the location for what was intended." The following people have signed, and then I have approximately ninety-nine signatures. Today at 3:50 PM, I received three letters for objections that I will share. This one is signed by Jan Cook, 711 Laura Lane. "City Council, I'm not opposed to Quickstar trying to make a go of it in a town this size, but the proposed location isn't accommodating for such a business as in, one, congesting and already busy intersection; two, rezoning needed; three, air, noise, light, and ground pollution slash litter; and four, slowing the traffic flow for folks entering and exiting this town. Thank you for your consideration." Next one received is, was submitted sincerely, Marilyn Ducey, 2302 Des Moines Street, Webster City. "Dear City Council members, I would like to voice my objection to the proposed rezoning of Lot One, Fair Meadow Heights addition. My concerns are, one, higher traffic volume. With the new fifty-plus housing development between Beef Street and Des Moines Street, traffic on Fair Meadow will increase significantly. Adding a convenience store slash truck stop will add even more. Two, loss of green space. Will the existing storm sewers and other infrastructures handle the runoff caused by loss of this green space? Flooded streets and basements are a concern. When the property across the street was rezoned, I was told there would be no standing water. Not the case. In fact, there was water standing in the ditch to the south of that property for most of the summer. Three, Quickstar has taken the truck scale and truck parking off their proposed plan. Once you change the zoning, they can add them at any time. Quickstar has agreed to pay for fixing the intersection at Superior and Fair Meadow to accommodate turning truck traffic. It is a poorly designed intersection, but should not be a determining factor in making this zoning change. Think about the tax-paying residents and how this will affect them, and not talk to anyone who has property nearby that wants this change. Maybe the bank who is selling the land is the exception. I do not object to Quickstar bringing its business to Webster City, but do not think this is the proper location for it. Thank you for your service and attention to this matter." This was submitted by Roger Luan Garvey, 604 Middle Street. "To whom it may concern, we feel if Quickstar is going to landscape and put up a fence between our property and their store, we would be in favor of their proposal. This is also in contingent with their promise to not ever put in truck stalls or a truck scale making the property into a truck stop. We understand the business could be good for our town, but we want them to be good neighbors to us also. Thank you." And at 5:20 PM, I was given, this is from Malloy Law Firm, Lynn Collins Seba, to city manager, mayor and city council. "Please note that the undersigned attorney represents property owners Leo and Sheri Lambie as well as Jeff and Jerita Nelson in regards to their properties located in Webster City, Iowa. My clients presently own and reside on residential property which is immediately adjacent to the property subject to the petition for rezoning, and both would be adversely impacted by the proposed zoning change. These property owners protest the change in the current zoning for a portion of the property from R1 to C3. Mr. Lambie has previously filed protests which has been signed by property owners within the 200 feet of the exterior boundaries of the property proposed to be rezoned, as well as additional residents of Webster City. Please consider this protest in accordance with Iowa Code Section 414.5. Very truly yours." That is all the written objections that I have.
Are there any oral objections?
Thank you. My name is Lynn Collins Seba. Perfect. Lynn Collins Seba with the Malloy Law Firm, and you just read the letter that I submitted. Mr. Lambie has asked for me to be here to represent him. I'm also representing Jeff and Jerita Nelson, who I visited with earlier in regards to the issue. And if you could put the slide up that had the, showing the zoning, where you got the R1 and the R2. Okay. So right on the north side of there, we've got Leo, and then right at the end of the street, yeah, there you go. So Jeff, Jeff's house is just right there in the northwest part of this particular piece that we're looking at rezoning, and then Leo's going to be to the north of it. And within that area, there is room to put housing in there, and there was always anticipated that that should be developed residential. If you scroll down a little bit, you'll see where you've got another street that can be extended out. And that was originally platted, and I don't know at what point that was vacated, or if it's ever been vacated, from the end of the pavement there. But there are city utilities that come in there that could easily surface as well as the street, and you could put residential development in that area. And we just, as the property owners here, see no reason whatsoever that the Quickstar could not confine its operations to below that R1, and the request here is not to rezone the R1. Have the commercial that's existing, and then if it's part of your comprehensive plan to take all of Fair Meadow Drive, which it sounds like you want to resolve to do, you can certainly take that little piece down there that's R2 and put that into commercial as well. So the objection would be to the R1 on the top to please do not rezone that. And then Leo, we done a little research and wanted to address as far as the square footage.
The, I don't know what I did to figure right now, but Casey's down here on Superior Street. They cover approximately thirty-three thousand three hundred square feet. I think there's a whole lot more than thirty-three thousand square feet in the one that you've got that's already C3. So if they want just a convenience store and a filling station, I think there's plenty of room there.
Yeah. I mean, the biggest problem is if you as a council take that and you rezone that and you make that C3, there's nothing to prevent Quickstar or another subsequent owner from then developing that into commercial, and it starts to encroach upon those residential properties, and does create a problem for those owners that has put significant investments in their homes into that area. Thank you.
We'll close the hearing. Daniel, do you want to sign on that?
Yeah, I think, just wanted to give the council an update in terms of how we kind of got to where we're at today, and that's originally Quickstar had first approached the city and submitted a petition to rezone this particular parcel. They submitted the petition in the summer. There was one, Planning and Zoning Commission first met, and there was four issues that really stuck out and warranted an unfavorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. Quickstar then, or a lot of those four issues really stemmed from, one, the buffer zones in their original site plan that Quickstar hadn't developed. Let me pull that up. And it may not be as clearly visible in the black, but with the white outline, you can see where they've removed, one, the scale, but also the truck parking that was closer to the homes on the north side. The buffering, as well as the issues with the intersection were concerned that warranted the unfavorable recommendation from the Planning and Zoning. Quickstar then withdrew their original application, reworked their site map to what you see today, and they've also approached the city and have worked with our city engineer, engineering firm Snyder and Associates to look at developing a improvement to that intersection to address the concerns that were commented and raised during the Planning and Zoning Commission. If council moves and recommends and passes the ordinance on the first reading, then we would work out a caution agreement for the improvements of that intersection to fulfill and realize those improvements at that intersection. You have any other specific questions for me or Carla that we can address?
I just want to make a point of note. Because we received a protest under 14.5, it's state code and our city ordinance requires it be a three-fourths vote to pass, and because there's five of you, obviously, unless one of you is going to vote three-fourths of yourself and then one-fourth of yourself no, it has to be four-fifths, so.
Not, also to note, I think during the first process or the first petition, there were a group of residents from the neighborhood who had approached the city council at a council meeting a month or two ago with a petition in favor of Quickstar coming in.
The Garveys brought the question, "Do they do any kind of fencing on the property line? Privacy fence or anything?"
Yes, they do. We have Wade from Quickstar, he can address any specific issues you may have regarding that, but they have addressed fencing along the perimeter of the, of the Quickstar site, as well as landscaping, as you can see the outlines by the, these represent trees and shrubs and.
I've had several people talk to me, some are in favor and some are not in favor, but one issue that was brought up is potentially, once they get in, you know, the term was used bait and switch. Okay, they don't have the scale, they don't have the overnight parking for the rigs. Then six months down the road, who's to say they can't do that to make that type of situation? And I think for the record, in my personal opinion, these folks that own these houses out there, I definitely empathize with what they're looking at on this type of situation. And then again, I think the idea of somebody coming into town, Quickstar, is another thing. But my personal opinion is, I think there should be different places where they could go, as opposed to this particular location, because as folks have alluded to, it's residential going in commercial. We got the McDonald's there, and we got the Kmart on that side. And I guess, I have no problem with coming into town, but I do have a real strong problem about where they want to go, just because encroachment on residential.
The only problem I see with the residential is it's, what is it, a hundred thousand dollars an acre, I think it was, that we're looking at for peteance. That, I don't know, does anyone hear from the bank? But, I mean, we just did a subdivision at twenty-two thousand dollars an acre, and we can't, we can't get it done. I mean, trying to sell that at a hundred thousand dollars an acre and make it into residential is just about impossible.
No, what I'm talking residential, I'm talking about the folks that live in there to the north and to the west for where that's at.
And Leo already has commercial property beside him.
Did we have these issues on the bank bill, those before me?
Yeah, I believe from what I understand, the same, the same objections were raised by, in some cases, the same property owners.
I, I feel there's other people that'd like to speak. Maybe now would be a good time to allow that.
Well, we did that already.
No, I, 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 we listened to oral objections. I feel that maybe there's some other input that would like to be given. If not, that's fine. I just want to make sure everyone has a chance to speak if wanted to tonight. I mean, I hate to rush to vote, but.
I'd say something. It's a little bit off the subject, but my concern is, with the whole traffic there, is it going to go from two lanes to four lanes all the way around? Because when you start bringing in all that kind of traffic, two lanes is not enough. And that intersection has been a problem ever since it's been put there with that section. So that's one of my concerns. And I do empathize with the people that live behind. Maybe a different plan could be made, but my big question is, what's happening with the whole intersection?
No, great point, Angela. And I believe that's something that we'll, we'll figure out further down the road, but no, no pun intended. But I know a traffic study has been done, and it has been addressed that there is a better flow needed, correct, at least at the intersection.
Yeah, to accommodate the additional traffic that would be incurred by Quickstar and the semi-trucks that would be coming in.
My name's Greg Mahary. I built an office a couple years ago on the corner, the west, on Fair Meadow, Fair Meadow and Des Moines Street. I invested a considerable amount in my business. Feel like we've done a good job improving that property and the aesthetics there. I don't feel like a high-traffic convenience store with more than likely bright commercial lighting and forty-four-hour business next door would do anything to benefit my business or property value. I have a couple of questions. Mine is a permitted use on an R2 zone, but we were held to certain lighting restrictions, more residential, and some building restrictions to make it fit in with the residential area. Will that be applied here on that commercial zone, since it's next to a residential zone? Is it possible to make this zoning change, but make it conditional so that they cannot expand and build a truck stop once it's zoned commercially? I don't know. Anything about zoning, but can you do a conditional zoning change in a case like that?
I don't know.
You know, in most cases, you know, the city and the council considers a zoning change absent knowledge of what is actually going to go in. You're approving the use as, as the council or the planning and zoning has outlined in their zoning category. So, I mean, certainly, working with Quickstar and at least some other comments, we're to try to address the agency concerns, and that being one of them. To what extent we go in trying to ensure that they don't do it, I mean, it's, it's kind of replacing restrictions on the zoning category that's just not there yet. Now, that doesn't mean that as we work to this agreement, that that, that may not be a consideration, but council right now is just approving the rezoning as the zoning category allows.
Okay. Thank you.
Ron, did you want to say something?
Somebody objected to what, Webster City Federal, out there at one time, is that what you were saying?
Yes, please.
The difference to Webster City Federal and Quickstar is huge as far as traffic is concerned. You know, Quickstar's going to be a very high-traffic area. Are they going to redo the street out there too? It needs a lot of work too. Is that included in it?
Intersection.
The intersection.
Just the intersection. Because isn't that, aren't they going to be driving on Fair Meadow to get there though? So who repairs that then? Because that needs some work, I think. Is that the city's responsibility then?
Yes.
Yes. Is that what the plan is?
Pretending to taking care of the street?
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, the, the street is our street, and, and good point, you know, that hasn't been addressed yet. That may be something down the road, but again, it, it's definitely going to see more traffic, and I can't argue with that. But at this point, we've only addressed the intersection, and some changes made, obviously, you know, coming and going from the lot if this does move forward, but the road itself will not be touched.
So can, are you saying that you are saying that Quickstar is not going to put in a truck stop, but they're just going to put in a convenience store and a gas station, or what's?
That's pretty good.
Yes.
That's, that's the far as it's going to go?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Jim. John, did you want to?
I've got a good exercise. I've got to support my neighbor on this. I think there should be another zoning there of R2 or something that's a buffer between his property and the residential area, and I think I want to emphasize or bring up again that once it's zoned C3, why anything can be done with that property, change the plans with, anything that's allowed in C3, so. Might have suggested that the city, for one time, they extend South Street to develop that area for residential, but they chose to go out to the Brewer Creek area and spend a good amount of money out there, but that's done. So supporting the neighbor, don't make the care for a full place truck stop if it's any way that be assured that nothing's changed from the existing plan would be a little more palatable to me.
Anyone else?
No.
Mr. Mayor, council, my name is John Hemingway, and I represent eleven people that belong the land south of here, right across from this project, the Hapco Partnership, which is, stands for Hemingway, Alexander Pratt, and it's held the land longer than anyone. We originally sold the land off to Webster, Webster City Financial, and if you can move the, can you move the thing down, up? There you go. There you go. This is the... That's the land that I'm concerned about. Truck stop would cause a different valuation of our property, cause it to go down and not go up. And we've been here longer than anybody, but this doesn't make any sense, but I'm concerned about the people that live around it, and that they're not subject to diesel smells and lights on twenty-four hours a day and a big tall sign, you know. We really don't know what that's going to look like, tell us done. Anyway, I'm concerned for that, and our family originally built Fair Meadow Drive in the sixties and never thought it'd be this busy, so it's, it's a busy place. It sounds like you're head over heels for the truck stop, so I'll just say thank you, and, and my big caution now then goes over to the intersection. stop, so I'll just say thank you and, and my big caution now then goes over to the intersection. It's the city's responsibility for the intersection and I think we'll all agree that it's less than adequate and I've seen the plans to redo it. I'm worried to death that you'll do a little, as little as possible because you don't have the money and it needs to be done right and finally be done once right. So I thank you for your time. Appreciate letting me talk. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Luanne Tanner and I live in the area. I totally understand what Leo Lamby is referring to. I get that. Actually, I would think that Garbys would probably be more affected because it'd be pretty close to them. You know, I realize it's out Leo's kind of back door. One of the questions that I have is, we talked about it being a residential, however, there's no street to access that because of years and years ago, John Peterson put that garage at the end of Middle Street. So if you were going to use that for residential or that garage had to be torn down to continue Middle Street or to have it go around the other side of Garbys proper. So I've never really understand the residential part of it and maybe that's just because I don't get it.
Yep.
Okay? The other thing is, is Friday night, we went to Hampton to a basketball game. We stopped at the Quick Star over there. I was very impressed, very clean, three people on duty working. It was not so bright that, granted, it's kind of more in a, you know, a business area, but there were homes around it. I guess if anyone ever has a chance to go to one, go because they have, it's, it's a very nice store. I didn't notice if there were gas or diesel pumps for trucks or not. There weren't diesel, okay. But no scale or anything like that. It was just, is that on the right? Okay, yeah. So, you know, and he has mentioned before, wait, right, okay, that they are willing to put up a fence, which would potentially really help. I guess that was one of the questions that when he first came to town to talk was about this and all the neighborhood went over. And I said, well, you know, how high would the fence be? And his response to me was how high do you want it? As far as the trash and stuff, you know what? People walk down Des Moines Street and throw their McDonald's sacks into other people's bushes and right across the street from us where there's a big little row of bushes there, garbage is dumped all the time. My street, I live on Brewer, we're constantly picking out McDonald's sacks, cups, you know? I think that's just what happens. You just have to do your part and clean it up. So that is my question though about the Middle Street thing, because I don't get where, where, who would want to build a house there? Not me, but that's just... And I guess, you know what, I can see McDonald's sign, but I can also hear all the trucks going down the four lane at night too. So if you're sitting outside. I do understand where Lamby's are coming from. I get that. But I guess I'm looking at progress and I think it's, we need to move forward with progress, you know, in general. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah?
Good evening, my name is Ryan Burkintrump. I live at South in Lisa. I've lived in Wefter City for a year and the prior thirteen years, we lived in communities that had Quick Stars or Quick Trips, their sister stores. And I just want to say in their defense that they are excellent facilities. The cleanest restaurants I've ever experienced, fair prices, they do lots of things for our communities and the communities that I lived in with different fundraising programs and such. The other thing that I'd like to speak to and think about in development terms is we're developing this end of the city and there are no facilities like this on the south side of town. Yes, there's a gas station at Ohio and Superior. It is certainly not a convenience store. Otherwise, everything else is located on second and that's a real disadvantage for everything on the south side of town. It would be great if I could walk there and buy milk or bananas or whatever and get gas as I'm exiting town. I've been to the dock stop on the south side of twenty and it is also showing its age and doesn't seem to be interested in investing in itself. So having a company like Quick Star come in and offer to develop property and provide needed services on the south side of town, I think is an excellent opportunity for our city. The concern that my wife and I have is you've built a lovely sidewalk along Superior Street. It would be really nice to build a sidewalk along Fair Meadow and see if that could be incorporated into the plan. I know Dr. Mahary might not enjoy putting in a lot of sidewalk on a corner property, but I think that it would aid in access and would protect people with the increase in traffic that we'll see from the development of Brewer Creek additions that have just been opened since Fair Meadow is the only access point to that entire part of town. So I'm here to speak in favor of it because of the services that it would provide to my side of town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, anyone else have any more questions?
Well, I'll just say that the, the people that I've talked to have overwhelmed my knowing been in favor. I've had, actually had no one that I spoke with or anyone approach me and say that they weren't in favor of, of moving forward with a project like this. Obviously, for them to do the project, we have to consider rezoning this commercial, otherwise they can't proceed forward. I haven't personally received any emails from anyone in, in opposed to it. I've talked to quite a few people that are all in favor of it. A large majority of people don't want to come to a public setting and talk. They're just not comfortable with that. So I guess, I, I look at it as progress. I mean, I can certainly see people that had property adjoining that had anticipated that use would be a certain way for the, for the rest of their time on the property. I can understand that, but I also don't want to be, I guess, a barrier to progress for the city either.
That's a great point. You know, I unfortunately have been approached by some people against it though, which makes my decision very tough. I wouldn't say it's fifty-fifty, but there's definitely a, 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 a volume of folks against it, which I totally understand and empathize for. I live in the, the area, not within a few blocks of it, but four or five blocks of it and I would definitely have a different opinion if my address was on the adjoining property. So I empathize greatly for those, but I do think it is a progressive step for our offering and our community. I think it's a reputable business. If we were talking something else, then maybe it'd be a different story, but today we're talking a Quick Star using it. I am fully aware that rezoning it does open it up for other opportunities in the future. We're banking a lot on Quick Star being equitable and successful in that area. So no matter how this goes down, I hope if they do happen to come to our community, we do support them.
Did you want to come up, say something?
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Wade Dumond, a Quick Trip, Quick Star out of La Crosse and it was quite a drive down. Also, no one has to go that far tonight. I want to try to answer a few of the questions that have been brought up. Based on, there was one question about whether South Street actually had been extended at some point in the past and then vacated. We found no evidence of that ever being done. There is a utility easement there with a sanitary, but that's it. Nothing of record that we found in the abstract or title work. There was also concern and it was mentioned by a number of people about, you know, if you, if you rezone this property, there's nothing to stop a different use coming in. Based on the agreement that we're reviewing right now, that's been discussed, there is, is a statement in there that precludes us from changing our plan. Now, we're going to be okay with that to a certain extent, but we, we'd like to at least be able to come back to council and get that changed. So we're probably going to ask for a little bit of a, a minor tweak to that. But right now, that is something that is addressed in that agreement and so we can't change the plan. We can't add the scale back in. We cannot add the parking back in based on what, what we're looking at agreeing to. And that's being reviewed right now and hopefully get that back to you pretty soon. There was a number of questions about the trees and the buffering and with some of the changes as well as the concerns from the neighbors, we have, right now, we have over a hundred and fifty feet between the edge of paving and all of the existing uses around us. Plus, we have fences being proposed as well as additional landscaping that we added to the plan as well to, to buffer even more. It's not a truck stop. It's not designed with those facilities and we do have the diesel fuel, but that's it. There was a comment about traffic and going from a two-lane to four-lane. I didn't know if that was the discussion on Superior or Fair Meadow. The, the traffic study actually showed that even in the twenty-year's plan, that there is no improvements that are, are required based on traffic itself. Now, based on the movements, which are the problem at the intersection, that's what we redid and reworked and re-studied. So two different issues, but the, the traffic itself doesn't increase to the point where there's actually any improvements required. No additional turn lanes, no additional through lanes, anything like that. Lighting, there was some concerns about lighting and we have a photometric plan that's also submitted to the city and that does meet the city scanners. So we, we try to limit any light that spills over. We use a full cutoff so that it doesn't go up, it's all down, direct it to the ground where we want it as well as the, if you look at most convenience stores that have any amount of age to them, it's, it depends on who's doing them, you can actually see the fixtures underneath the canopy. We always do recessed fixtures so that you cannot see the light source when you're off the site. So that, that eliminates a lot of the spill over onto any additional, any adjoining property, including the street. I think that's, those are the ones that I heard, but if you have any other questions for me, I'd sure try to answer them.
Have you looked at any other sites other than this particular site? On the south side is what we have in Industrial Park. We spent a lot of money on that. There is an existing truck stop and I guess my really, the concern is, I mean, that's pretty much set up to handle this type of stuff. Have you looked anywhere else or is this the only place you looked on Fair Meadow?
No, we, I've looked through the entire city quite a few times over the last three or four years and on the south side of the highway, it would not, we would not be able to make it work there. Doesn't have the rooftops, the right demographics.
So basically, you want to be co-located in a residential or adjacent to a residential area is what you're?
We don't have to be adjacent to it, but we...
Co-located in the area then?
Yeah.
They have convenience store.
Yeah, to me that shows...
You don't want to be a truck stop.
Yeah, we don't want to be a truck stop. That was, that was never the intent here.
And I believe, I might be paraphrasing this because it was months ago, a planning and zoning meeting that I overheard, but you're, when you go to market, you actually go as a convenience store to, to service like, you know, the, the grocery and, and produce items to adjacent neighborhoods. Correct?
Yes, sir. In some jurisdictions, we're actually considered a neighborhood grocery. That's the permit. It's not a convenience store.
Well, as a truck driver for forty-plus years, I can tell you, I wouldn't like to go and buy fuel from your, from your truck stop because it's too small for me to get into. But that would be my choice if I was driving around, so. But as a truck driver, you know, it wouldn't be my preferred place to go. I'd go across the street, the south side of the road.
One question that's came up a couple of times when people, you know, was asking questions about it. Do you guys, I probably know this just by going to Quick Stars before, but do you guys offer E85? Being a farm community and, and so tied to ag, it's kind of perplexing that some of our gas stations, only any actually serve E85 gasoline?
We do many locations, but it really depends on if there's the demand.
Oh, very good.
But yes, if that's something that is a demand is requested, we definitely can have.
Anyone else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, I, like everyone else here, I, I've heard both good and bad, way heavier on the good. I wasn't necessarily as excited about it until they made a bunch of changes accommodating basically what we wanted, so I guess in the future, if you have an opinion, make sure you let us all know because I know I didn't hear from too many.
I have a question. You talk about this plan agreement. Who signs off on the plan? Is it an agreement with the city?
Yes, for the, for the intersection.
Do you make a formal vote of the plan?
Yes. If, if council approves the rezoning, then we would work out the final details of that agreement and bring back to the city council for the city council to review and vote for, for the mayor to sign and for staff to execute.
You have the rezoning and then there's a separate vote on the plan agreement.
Not, not for the, for the rezoning, such as with any ordinance. This isn't the only reading that the council would consider. There would be a subsequent second and possibly a third reading of that ordinance unless council waives the third reading in their second, on their second reading.
Not on the agreement, but on the zoning.
Right.
An agreement is straight up and down, vote at a future meeting.
Correct.
And that's to be, the final details be worked out with Quick Star and with more details.
Correct.
How binding, how binding is that? Can that be changed at any time in the future?
Well, it's a, it's a legal document between us and Quick Star, so certainly if they, you know, renege on the terms, then certainly that there's options for, for recourse.
And it binds not only the current user, but also any future person that would come into the same areas, so.
I have one major comment. How many people have been to Clear Lake and see how much gas is lower than Wefter City? Okay, we were up there last winter for a basketball game, stopped at Casey's, filled up with gas with the fuel saver. I asked the clerk at the convenience store, I said, what, why is your gas so cheap? And he told me the gas station on the east side of the interstate sets the gas prices and that's Quick Star. I'm for anything that comes in that's going to lower our gas price, hopefully. You know, you go up to Mason City, two weeks ago, Walmart is $2.19 a gallon and we're $2.40 something. So I'm for anything that's going to lower our gas prices in town.
Can you address what changes will be made to the intersection?
Well, yeah, it hasn't been decided. I mean, it's, there was three, there was three options for the intersection. I believe it wasn't a...
Yeah, I can do all of that.
And obviously, obviously, the most expensive one was, was preferred by us and obviously the cheapest was preferred by, by Quick Star. So... I guess the biggest difference was that the most expensive would mean that the left lane would go straight south. So if you're going, coming south out of town, the, it would go back to pretty well the way it used to be before. So the right lane would turn right. The left lane would go straight, straight ahead and straight up the interstate. Anything else is less than that. So, so obviously, if we were doing the cheapest version, then it would stay pretty well the same as it is, but there would be a right turning lane. The median would still be there.
Yeah, we're addressing the turning.
It would be moved. It wouldn't be as long on the south. It would still be mostly there. I mean, on the north, it would still be mostly there on the south.
So the biggest improvements would be on the west side of the intersection. So by McDonald's and by the bank. Part of the option of what we're looking at is essentially creating a, my pointer works, there we go. A right-hand turning lane going southbound. And then widening the turn radius for the corner on the southwest corner. And so, that would accommodate vehicles as well as larger, larger vehicles and semi-trucks to be able to make those turns. Part of the center medians would be cut back further to accommodate easier turn, left-hand turn coming in to, off of Fair Meadow, going onto Superior. But the plans do not include removing all of the medians. That's just cost prohibitive. Part of what Quick Star is proposing is to pay for part of the cost, the lesser option that they had worked with our engineers on. We prefer option C, which is what you see here, because it's a, it's a longer-term solution to the intersection itself as we see more, more traffic coming in and out of that area. So part of what we're looking in terms of paying for that would be our road east tax dollars that goes towards road improvements, such as this.
Daniel, I'd like to get the cart in front of the horse, because I know there's-
Thank you.
We obviously gotta handle the zoning issue first, but can you speak to why it'd be cost prohibitive to leave the groups?
We would essentially have to tear out all the center medians and redo the base and then the concrete work for that. And so, the option presented here solves the immediate issues at hand with the turning radiuses.
So many thousand dollars a foot, it was ridiculous.
To remove it?
What it costs to take it out, yeah. I just, I don't know why it's so expensive. Because there's no road underneath it, so once you tear it up, then we've got to redo the road again.
You can't really see the shading, but where my pointer is at, that's the start of the median going northbound from Fair Meadow. It would be cut back to where the pointer is now. So we're going from here to here, and then-
How many feet is that?
What about the south side?
It takes out nearly all that wide piece is gone. That's on the north side.
What about the south end?
The south end will be the same.
South end will stay the same, but the turning radius would be widened. So cutting into the grassy earth.
The road's gonna be that much wider when the trucks come out of McDonald's.
Well, what about what's coming from the south coming up to go to McDonald's?
There's no problem. You can turn around that.
You do, we essentially have the same. We essentially-
Not going in there, you shouldn't. If he can't drive at all, if he's getting hooked up going in there, he can't drive. That's all he's worried about. He's getting hooked up no matter what.
He had all four, eight doors on the rear end.
Similarly, the curb on the northwest corner is gonna be, is gonna be cut back further back and widen that section.
So he's saying you come from the south, you're gonna have a wider spot over there to get around. Where we saw the semi hung up, that's the same.
Yes, Joe.
Are you gonna do anything with the raised concrete in the center of the median?
That's what we were just talking about. That's staying where-
I'm sorry, I can't hear well. I'm sorry, I apologize. I didn't hear.
Yeah, it's, it gets, on the north part, it would get cut mostly away, but on the south, it would stay the same.
I'm on your team then.
Unfortunately, most of it, you know, on the south, it'll be pretty well sustained exactly as it is.
You can't just chop it off, is that what you're trying to do with that?
It'd be nice. Easier said than done, but the cost to cut it out and then refor it to essentially be able to handle the loads is cost prohibitive.
Anyway, we're getting off point here a bit, so we'll go back to the zoning. I guess we, we pretty well talked about it. Everybody ready to vote on this? That will roll call.
This is on the first reading of an ordinance.
No, I'll read it. Call for a motion on the first reading of opposed ordinance. An ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Webster City as provided by section 121.06 of the Code of Ordinances of Webster City, Iowa, 1996 by rezoning property from R1, single-family dwelling, District, and R2, multiple-family dwelling district, to C3, Highway Commercial, District, said property being located in Fair Meadow Drive, Webster City, Iowa. Call for a roll call.
Need a motion.
Move to approve the first reading.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote.
Yeah.
Talbot?
As it stands, no, I'm not in favor, no. There's too many questions and too many concerned citizens.
Welch?
Yes.
Hawkins?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay, so as asked, we will be having a second reading the next council meeting. Item three is a report update by Shirley Husfeldt from Midas Council of Governments on the status of CDGBG Community Development Block Grant monies for the housing rehab program. Did I mess that up, Shirley?
I'm Shirley of Midas Council of Orders. A new update on where we're at. As you know, you received the grant from the state to rebuild eight tent homes in a targeted area on the northeast side. And-
Northwest.
Northwest. See, I was thinking of that. We received originally 15 applications, 16 if you want to count that one person applied twice. Just so you know. Of those 15 applications, 12 were eligible. One person, one family withdrew. One never completed their application. And one was just not eligible for the program. Since then, of the 12 that's eligible, we've had one person withdraw because they're moving. And one person withdraw because they are, we're getting divorced. We have one that switched ownership of the property, and the property requires you to live in it and to own it. And since they switched ownership, they no longer own it. One, state has, when we originally applied, it was to put $24,999 in the home from state money. And then the city's money would go to put anything that's older than that. And they have found out on a clearing from the Department of Public Health that there cannot be more than $24,999 put in a home, no matter whose money it is. So one individual's estimate was at $37,000, so we could not do the home. That left us with eight. We have completed three completely. One is to be completed next month. And four were going out for, well, we started going out for bidding, and it was supposed to be our walk-throughs, but it was last week during the snowstorm, so we are actually moving until next week. And then the bids will be due on the ninth. That leaves us with two homes, or two spots open. Now, the grant ends, everything has to be done July 30th. So we're looking for two more applicants in that area quickly.
We don't, you don't have anybody?
I have none. I've verified everybody that's gotten to me. We've sent out, well, originally, we posted posters. We've sent out, those who sent in pre-application, which was quite a few. And then we sent notice of the program to every household in that targeted area. And that's when we got the ones we've gotten. Since then, we've sent out a second notice of applications to everybody, and we still haven't gotten anything new.
Yeah.
Couple of problems we've had with the program will be limited contractors. Unfortunately, right now seems to be a busy time for everybody. So we've only had, you know, a couple contractors been on the program. So we hope with the next four that they'll go really well. But we're still looking for two people, or two families to apply in that area. So, did anybody, knows of anybody? Because we still have to verify them, get them cleared through the state and everything, so.
Yeah.
We are, that's where we're at in the program.
Okay.
Otherwise, we'll have to finish. If we don't get them, we'll be giving funding back for that portion.
Yeah. It's been a hard, been a hard push to try and get people up.
It was tougher than you thought it would be to get applications.
We would have thought, we picked that area because we thought that it would be an easy sell, but it wasn't.
Plus, it's by the schools, we thought. It's a area that needed some work. But unfortunately, a lot of them are rental, too. Rental doesn't qualify. You have to own it, and you have to live in it, so.
For somebody who's elderly and there's, do you, do you walk them through it? Do you hold, do you hold their hand quite a bit?
Anybody who wants, I walk more than-
Shirley, Shirley's walking them through.
We will do whatever they need us to do for them. Well, to a point, as long as it's legal. Maybe, maybe I need to stress that.
When did you say, July 1st?
July 31st. Everything, all work and everything has to be completed. And it takes about 90 days to finish a home.
Yeah. Derek?
Some, some are not. I don't want to say everything, but that's, that's the most we will take.
Examples of stuff you guys do for them?
When, with the program, for this particular program, we do a lot of roofs, a lot of windows, a lot of doors. We check the furnace, and if the furnace end comes back that it needs work, or it needs to be replaced, we replace furnaces. We fix stairs. We do electrical, a lot of electrical for that program, so.
Shirley, can you give a, for both people here and folks at home, roughly what is that targeted area?
Well, the targeted area is, it goes right through Second Street from, I want to say First to Third, and from Fair Avenue over, and in between there, it narrows down a little bit over to Broadway. But we have a little that goes, you know. But if anybody's interested, I can send them a map. I'm more than willing to do that, so.
So like, are houses in like, for, just to give a landmark around the Dairy Queen area?
Um, we are hoping at, we're doing a lot.
Second Street, East Sixth.
Right here. And then we have a little bit down in here that we're going for.
All right.
So it kind of goes up in here.
I'm following you.
Yeah.
Talking with Carla, there's been quite a bit of marketing and outreach trying to get people into this or participating in the, can you kind of let the council know a little bit of what that has entailed for you and-
Well, like I said, we have sent out twice. We've been putting in the paper. We've sent out twice actual notice to every address. We have actually asked homeowners that have applied, that have gotten theirs done, to recommend anybody that might be interested or willing to do it. We have come today, and we've been here about a year ago, also trying to get applicants. And ever since those original 15, it seems like we have not received anything new since the original time. We've gotten a couple, like I said, a couple that originally applied have not responded back. Or they've responded, but never quite got the paperwork in. Those were those three I explained before. But we had plenty until a couple, we had the three withdrawals didn't help us, so.
Never thought it'd be so hard to give some money.
Can you go back to those three that just never quite finished?
We, one of them, we tried three, four times and talked to them, talked to them on the phone, sent them information in the mail, and has never responded back. And then the other one, like I said, they chose to withdraw due to health reasons, that type thing. So I won't pester them.
Yeah. It's, Shirley's trying hard to get them to-
Short of knocking door to door. And then I'm afraid somebody will think I'm a lackluster salesman or something.
They'll ask for your permit.
That could be. And that's the only thing we haven't done, is knock door to door, so.
Thanks, Shirley.
Sure.
Thanks for driving the weather and all.
My car was warm.
So I guess we can put some more calls out on the news and see if we can gather up a couple more. It can be a shame to give the money back.
Well, and again, if anybody's looking, my phone number's 515-576-7183, extension 212. If you know of someone, just give me a call.
You want that again?
515-576-7183, extension 212 is my direct extension. Thanks. So, they'll write that on the bathroom wall.
Thanks, Shirley. They were on YouTube, Shirley, you got that?
Maybe you should put it on Facebook. I mean, the information that you just said, you get the newspaper. A lot of those people probably don't get the paper.
Yeah.
I don't know, social media.
I guess I would guess the people just think it's too good to be true, probably, right?
There's various, you know, some of them think that the price of their house is gonna go up, so they don't want to spend the money on it. And that's really isn't things that will raise the price of your house. And then, of course, there's all sorts of other reasons, but.
Yeah, that's a good point, though, Becky. I mean, maybe the map would be a nice thing to put on our Facebook page. You know, people might be confused who qualify.
Well, not just on your, are you talking about city?
No, then we can all share it.
Yeah, that's where, because people aren't gonna see it on just the city's face. I never been there, but I watch yours, and I watch Brian's, and, you know.
And people watch yours, Becky, so share ours, okay?
We'll get it up there.
But on the Republican one, maybe we'll share it.
Okay. So items four and five on the agenda. There's a recommend, recommend approval for issuance of a beer and liquor license by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. Renewal of a Class E liquor license, Class B wine permit, Class C beer permit, and Sunday sales for Casey's General Store, number 3054 at 700 Superior Street. And renewal of B permit, Class B permit, outdoor service and Sunday sales for Hamilton County Exposition, Hamilton County Fairgrounds at 1200 Bluff Street. Call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Collectible?
Yes. Move to approve.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign? Motion approved. Item six is a motion by the council, by the city council, recommending the award of a contract for the Beach Street resurfacing project to the low bidder of Matthew Happy Construction Company of Annalaska, Wisconsin, to the Hamilton County Board of Supervisors, which is in accordance with the STP's Surface Transportation Rock Grant Program Agreement, DOT Funding Agreement, and 28E City Council Agreement. The city of Webster City's portion of the project is known as Division III.
Sure. This is where some keep moving along with the Beach Street project, the resurfacing project, essentially from Iowa Central Community College and down south, passed into the county jurisdiction. It's a cost-sharing project between the city and the county, and Midas and the state. The lowest bidder, Matthew Construction Company, came in at $2,476,082.91. Based on that, the cities, Webster City's share currently would be $212,800. With the STP funds that the city received, the city's share would be $76,262.97. So that's quite a considerable amount that the city benefits from, so.
Be the cheapest roadlet we've done in town in a while.
Anytime we can take advantage of grants.
Yeah. Okay, we're called for a motion.
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign? Motion approved. Item seven is a council memorandum, a motion to refer to the Planning and Zoning Commission, a request to vacate a portion of Third Street right-of-way, east of Ivy, and abutting Prospect Street.
So approximately, or not approximately, directly behind was formerly known as Godfather's Pizza. The city owns a lot. The city owns a lot on Prospect Street that goes clear back to Hy-Vee. In the past, the city has considered or has accepted offers or interest for the property. We have currently, right now, we're working with a developer interested in developing the site. Part of their site plan, they're looking at access not only from Prospect, but also coming off of what is currently a Third Street right-of-way pointer. Oops, if I turn it on. There we go. So roughly, this portion here, what we're looking, I'm trying to work with this developer, that piece of stretch of right-of-way, which is approximately 270 feet long by 66 feet wide, dead end into Hy-Vee, so it doesn't make much sense for the city to ever develop that into a standard road or city street and maintain that there above. We haven't vacated in the past because we still have underground utilities, electrical, water, sewer, storm sewer, and so we haven't considered developing that. What this developer looking at accessing the site from north, he would, then in turn, develop his access points, and part of the agreements we would have with them in exchange for an access easement would be to maintain the remainder of that portion of that right-of-way space. The city would vacate it, we would retain ownership, similarly to the parcels in the parking lots behind most of the downtown buildings on Second Street on the north side, and then provide him an access easement with the understanding that, you know, he would never build a structure that would impede our access to those underground utilities. We're working through that process. Part of that would entail the council referring this matter to planning and zoning for their review and recommendation back to council, as they have, once they review all the information.
So they've provided plans that, that the park that they want vacated does not sit over the utilities, or it does?
The initial plans that I've seen entail the parking lot extending into that portion, but not the building structure.
I'll, I'll move to refer to P and Z.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign. Thanks, Daniel. Next section is section D, reports and recommendations of officers, boards, and commissions. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial, routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have it, have it removed from, an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We have a motion to accept the city manager December reports, electric, wastewater, water, electric year-to-date, and water year-to-date, and code enforcement. We have a motion to accept Police Department December report, and a motion to accept the Fire Department December report.
Move to approve collectively?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign. Motion approved. Are there any other committee reports?
The youth advisory meeting's this coming Sunday at 7:00 PM. We may need to change the notice, though. It sounds like Fuller Hall is booked out that night, so maybe meet at the library or something. I'll find a place for us, I'll, as right now, we're not meeting at Fuller Hall, we'd most likely go to the library, but I'll confirm that. Still working on the Grisbee Golf Tournament this summer, so.
The community betterment group is meeting at Fuller Hall in the Sampson Room at 7:00 this Thursday, the 18th.
This Thursday?
Yep.
At what time, Brian?
7:00 o'clock.
In the Sampson Room?
Yep.
Are there any other reports, recommendations? Okay. Item E is closed session, meeting a closed session for the purpose of holding a strategy meeting in connection with collective bargaining, as authorized by chapters 20.17 and 21.5 of the Code of Iowa Code. Also, we have a second closed session, a meeting closed session to evaluate the performance of the city clerk, which is necessary to prevent needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation and that individual's request, a closed session as provided by chapter 21.5I of the Code of Iowa. Call for a motion?
It's all moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
O, same sign. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thanks.